Good evening and welcome to the North Andover School Committee meeting. Today is September 9th. It is 7:01 PM. And I'm calling this meeting back to order after executive session. And let's start with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. So I want to remind everybody that this meeting is being recorded. And please silence your devices. And I need to read to you the statement from the governor. And then we'll identify who's present in the room. So this open meeting of the North Andover School Committee is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings. And as such, the governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly acceptable physical location, accessible physical location. The order, which you will find posted with the agenda materials for this meeting allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will include public comment received via email. Actually, that's not on tonight's agenda, so we will not be having public comment tonight. I apologize for that misstatement. For this meeting, the North Andover School Committee is convening by video conference as posted on the town's website, identifying how the public may join. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Now, as we turn to the first item on the agenda, before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I, the chair, will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, the chair will go down the line of members, inviting each member by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. Please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until the chair yields the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage, please do so through the chair, taking care to identify yourself. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by rule call. So we're starting with the superintendent's report. And I will, oh, nope, we have to start by identifying who's present in the room. So I'll call the names of the members, and they will answer in the affirmative that they are present, starting with Mr. Teresi.
Here.
Mr. McDevitt.
Here.
Ms. Mably.
Here.
Ms. Lynch.
Here.
And myself, Helen Picard, chair, is here as well. So I'll call on Dr. Gilligan to introduce the team members that are with him tonight.
Hi, Greg Gilligan, superintendent. Dr. Jim Mealy, assistant superintendent.
Is here.
And participating remotely is Executive Director of Special Education, Marcy Bukusi.
Here.
And I believe that is all we have on the screen right now.
Okay, thank you. We have just a couple of agenda items tonight. And so we'll start with the superintendent's report.
Yeah, really briefly tonight, Helen. Madam Chair, we've been in some really productive PD over the last week, in SEL, in safety, and protocols, and technology. And I'm really looking forward to a terrific school year.
Thank you.
Working collaboratively.
So, thank you. Okay, terrific. So the chair does not have a report tonight. We've been speaking very regularly. And the main meat of the evening is our old business, the NADA collective bargaining contract. So before I go on to that business, I just want to make sure that no members have any questions right now, either for Dr. Gilligan or myself, since those are two items that I said we'd go down the line and let people have any questions, comments, or motions. So I'll start with you, Mr. Teresi.
No, I think we'll wait for the presentation and we'll go from there.
Okay, Mr. McDevitt?
Not right now.
Okay, Ms. Mably?
No, ma'am.
And Ms. Lynch?
No.
Okay, so we're on item number five, which is old business, the NADA collective bargaining. As you all know, and as the community likely knows, Mr. McDevitt and I have been serving school committee on the collective bargaining team with members of the North Andover Teachers Association, as well as members of the administration, as our team members. So we presented an executive session, a memorandum of understanding that we reached as a negotiating team last night with the North Andover Teachers Association and the North Andover School Committee. This agreement that we've made pushes back the start of the school year by one week. And we believe that it will provide a safe and successful start to the school year. And it will allow us to prepare students and schools. So we agreed to a phased-in start to the hybrid model. Dr. Gilligan, I don't know if you want to share a calendar.
We still start this.
Can you just clarify something? You said we are not delaying the start of school. We are still starting on September 16th. We are delaying the start of the hybrid dates.
Correct. Thank you, Mr. McDevitt, for that clarification. The first day of school will be September 16th, as we have agreed for many weeks now. So, and the first day of school is a remote day in the hybrid model. I'm not sure if the calendar is being presented, but I'm just going to describe for folks what the agreement that we came to. So instruction for all students will begin on September 16th. And most of those students will begin remotely. Pre-K students will begin in person on September 16th, as well as students who are in, who have been notified by the Special Education Department on August 28th, that they are in a variety of programs that I believe we call Cohort C and D. So kindergarten will be remote for the first four days of instruction. And then they will phase in on September 22 and 23. Those kindergarten cohorts will be split into two groups over these two days, so that students will have a more individualized instruction on their return. First through ninth grade students will be remote for the first six days of instruction and then begin in-person learning according to the hybrid model on September 24th. Grades 10 through 12 students will be in the remote model for the first eight days of instruction and then begin in-person learning according to hybrid model on September 28th. The OLA students will have live daily remote instruction from September 16th through September 23rd. Kindergarten through grade nine students will then switch to cohorts beginning on September 24th. And 10th through 12th grade students will switch to cohorts beginning on September 28th. So that is the phased-in approach that was agreed to in our negotiations with the negotiating team. And I want to give the members, I think, for protocol, we need to have a motion to agree to the MOU and a second, and then a discussion.
So I will move to approve the MOA in the, between the North Andover School Committee and the North Andover Teachers Association.
So it's moved by Mr. McDevitt.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Mably. And now we can move into discussion. The way we've been moving through this is I've been calling on each committee member. So I would start with you, Mr. Teresi.
I think it'd be beneficial for the members and the public and all the parents to hear more from yourself and Mr. McDevitt on the process that got to this point, where we've come from, and why we're here today on September 9th. I'd like to hear that first.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Teresi. Mr. McDevitt, would you like to chime in?
Sure. So I'm wondering, is the, anybody who's viewing at home, are they able to see what you are presenting, Dr. Mealy? So I'm wondering if you could present actually the calendar that we have in the joint letter. I think that that makes it a little bit clearer.
Yeah, if you scroll down, Dr. Mealy, to September.
No, he's getting the document.
So while Dr. Mealy is pulling this up, I want to talk a little bit about kind of where this is and how we kind of came to this. There we go. We might want to just make that a little smaller so people can maybe see the month there.
And I have this on my computer at home.
There you go.
Yeah, no, I think that's good. If you can just get rid of the arrow on the far right corner there. Perfect. I think it'll just make it a little bit bigger and easier for people to see. So we understand, we recognize that today is September 9th. School is slated to start on the 16th of that. The 16th would be a remote day, as we kind of went back in. We had a tremendous amount of negotiations with the teachers' union regarding the start of school and what that is going to look like. I think the underlying concern that everybody has for faculty, staff, and students is how do we return to school as a community safely and effectively? It's not as easy as just a regular school year where the buses pull up at the corner or you go through car drop-off and, you know, outcoze your child and we, you know, take our pictures and then kind of roll on from there. What actually happens this year is there needs to be a tremendous amount of education. Both our staff, we've given the staff as part of the negotiation process 10 days to kind of learn what they're doing within the building, to understand how things are happening in the building, the protocol from a health perspective and a safety perspective, as well as how do they change and, excuse me, modify what they're doing in a teaching perspective. We didn't think it was fair collectively for students to walk into school for the very first time on the 17th of September and not know what door to go in. That when they walk in, they need to, and I'm just going to kind of talk a little bit in general terms here, but that they're going to walk in, that they need to sanitize their hands upon entry into the building, that they need to do that for 20 seconds. They're going to walk down the hallway. If you're a high school student, there are no lockers. If you're a middle school student, there are no lockers. If you are a elementary school student, where you put your supplies, your desk, your bag, all of those things are different. So even though you're in a different grade, there is some understanding and some expectation of, you know, you have a cubby, you have, you know, somewhere to put your things in. We thought that for all of the students, it was beneficial for them to spend some time full day remote with their teachers from the 16th until the 23rd. So two of those were regularly scheduled remote days. To see their faces without masks on from home, to be able to understand the building. How do I walk down the hallway? What bathrooms can I use? Can I bring certain things in? When can we have snack? How are we going to have lunch? How are we going to have recess? Or any time where we're kind of spending some minutes outside. And it felt to us, from a safe perspective, that we didn't want to rush it. And I understand that the community is probably looking at this and saying, you know, there's a change in this. You know, I now have a modification. I'm missing two cohort days. I understand that. I appreciate that. I have three children of my own. But our number one intention is to return to school safely for as long as we can with the protocols that are given to us. So as we looked at this, it made sense for us to delay that. For the kindergarten students, I feel very strongly that there will be morning and PM days kind of later on. But that first day coming in, the 22nd and the 23rd, for the different AMP, I can't speak, AM and PM sections, that that day was to be memorable. It was to be something that they could come in. They could learn the school. They could understand what's happening in the school and not feel rushed in that process of having, you know, other students returning or coming in later in the day. So that was really important to us. When we talk about the 24th and the 25th, it is students who are going in up until grade nine for those two days. We were very much of the belief that, you know, we could return our students, eighth grade and under, to those, to those days that the process, you know, they were, for many of them, they were returning students to the schools that they were in. And we felt that that was a safe, reliable way to do that. When we looked at the middle school, for example, there are separate wings for sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. Those classes, those team sections kind of lend themselves very well based upon the wings and the design of that to keep students kind of separate from each other and an ability to kind of learn that building if you are a sixth grader. I know in the past, sixth graders have typically had an opportunity to go in and explore the building with their teachers to do that. We felt that a smaller group setting, you know, helped with that and gave them the opportunity to do that. When we talked specifically about the ninth grade students, we also felt it was very important that the ninth grade students, they did not have an opportunity to do a move-up day at the high school. That's something that has always kind of happened in the past. It did not happen this past spring. What also didn't happen, or was not necessarily here, in part because of busing. The ninth grade students would typically come in. They would spend a couple of hours in the building. They would have some tours. They would have student ambassadors kind of guide them through the building, what needs to take place, without the rest of the sophomores, juniors, and seniors kind of in the building for that. So it gave them an opportunity to learn that building. It's going to sound kind of funny, but, you know, if you think about Cohort A and B at the ninth grade level, you're now putting 150 students and 150 students only into the building where they can actually kind of walk around and learn that building and understand what's Main Street? Where's the gym? Where's the art wing? Where are the academic wings? Where are the foreign language classes? Things of that nature. So it just gave them that ability to do that. It also gives them the ability to learn and understand that there are certain hallways that will have movement in one direction. There are staircases that are up only, down only, and just really how to move within that building. The remainder of the high school students would be the sophomores, juniors, and seniors. They would be coming back the 28th and the 29th. There was very much a belief that they already, for the most part, know that building. There are certainly some new students who have moved in. However, they're able to say, you know, when you walk down Main Street, you know, this is the direction that you're walking. When you walk, if you're on this staircase, you know, this is an up staircase versus a down staircase. This is where things are within the building. So it gives the remainder of those students the ability to kind of return and start the week on the 28th with the hybrid kind of going in. I want to talk for just a quick second too, because I think it's important to recognize, it's not, it is delaying some in-person days. But if you take a look at the calendar, it is six full days. Whatever that day is, so, you know, in some cases, it may be 8:15 to 2 o'clock or 1:30 or so, whatever that timeframe is, it is full days. It is not a hybrid day. It is not any other form of day. It is an all-day, five-period instruction. For example, at the high school, I think it's either five or six at the middle, if I remember the schedule correctly, based upon RAs. And at the elementary level, you know, the different classes that are there, you know, in terms of reading and math and science, et cetera, that are there. So it, starting the year here, from our perspective, for six days, full remote days that are fully, that the staff are there for the entire duration. And then students kind of above the kindergarten level would be returning in their cohorts on that 24th, 25th. Trying to think if I had any other thoughts, Dr. Gilligan. Did I miss something as part of our?
I'll add a couple of things, Mr. McDevitt. One of the things that we believe is that students will learn best from the teachers who will be daily available to them. And in addition to their physical safety, their social, emotional safety is going to be very important as well. There are students who are anxious about coming back to school. There are students who are going to need more time to process the information. And it will be helpful to them to have the same consistent adults, six days back-to-back, who are able to answer their questions about the physical safety, about the emotional safety, and about the curriculum. We're not doing six days of only talking about physical safety. All these kids will be getting into their curriculum. So a teacher who's going to read them, you know, a favorite book, or what may become a favorite book, is going to be a person who's building trust with the students so that when they come into the setting, they already have an established relationship with that teacher. So those are some of the things that we feel are really critical in order to have a safe and successful start for students and for schools. And then I would turn to Dr. Gilligan and see if we missed anything.
No, Andrew, I think you did a really nice job, particularly around the different cohorts and levels. And I think that, you know, to your point, we've never, no one's ever returned to school on this level of protocols and safety measures. And it's certainly going to be different than any year in the past. And I know that the teachers and their training and their PD are looking forward to getting the kids up to speed too, as well. So I think you hit it all.
I just want to say one other kind of quick thing. This is not arbitrary in what we did and how we kind of came up with this. This has been, Mrs. Picard and the union have spent, we spent, and the administration has spent many, many, many nights and days together looking at how do we do this safely? And I completely recognize that this is a change for parents. We are not done negotiating. But when we met last night, we felt very strongly, in view of the fact that we had a school committee meeting tonight, that we came to the agreement last night, in full disclosure, that this communicated, I can't speak. This communication needed to go out to the North Andover community quickly so that parents had an opportunity to plan. And I know there are a lot of teachers who are right now developing their own return-to-school plans, right? So there are lessons, right? And the ability for them now to be looking at those first six days are all remote days for how they are teaching. It is not the hybrid pieces on the Thursday, Friday, Monday, Tuesday kind of combinations that are there. So there's a lot of thought that's through this. I think as we have said collectively, this is, this will be out. You know, I know that communication is going out. There will be 100 people who will have 100 different ways that this could be done or should be done. And we have done, I would say, the best, most thoughtful way to return students and staff safely back to our buildings.
Sorry, could someone just comment on the online learning academy and how that plays out in this calendar? Because it's a little bit different as well, I think.
So if I understand it correctly, the online academy, OLA, as it's becoming known, starts on the 16th. And their days are as they would have normally been. So they are full online, remote, OLA days. There is no change or impact for them. Is that correct?
No.
Yes, so they do start fully remote online. And it looks a little bit different at each level. Because we have to, you know, high school's a lot different than elementary school. And so they'll be completely remote. But at the same time too, we'll have a teacher that may pick up, you know, an online academy class. And they could be part of a cohort. Or they might teach in person as well, or a combination or a mix. So they'll be fully remote combined classes together until we go to the 24th.
That's what I'm trying to get at.
Yep, and then at the 24th, they will break into their cohorts because the different teachers will also be teaching at like, you know, ninth grade, they'll teach, they may teach 10th in person, or they may teach another class. You know, at the middle school, it's a person from each team. And at elementary was really the biggest impact where, you know, I think it's over 360 students, which is the size of an elementary school. So they'll be combined with their cohorts and all of this information. So this letter will go out tonight. Principals will be sending out information tomorrow on schedules and assignments, along with other information about, you know, reopening of school.
So they will be daily as well until they switch to the cohorts on the 24th? Thank you.
So, Ms. Picard?
Yes, sir.
Just a follow-up. I agree with Andrew. I mean, it's not arbitrary. I mean, I think if you look at it from the perspective of September 9th, today's date, what you said makes a lot of sense. What I think the frustration with most of the parents who elected to send their kids back to school, and this parent in school can remember, is that why did it take this long to get to this point? This came out on July 30th. We had a vote on August 10th. That's a month ago. So all these things that, the orientations that are necessary, that you outlined and are very thoughtful, why couldn't those have been done over the last two weeks? Why were the teachers reluctant to do that? And what's changed?
So I can answer a couple of those. I can say definitively, and this would be a union stance as well as my own stance. And I think the administration would stand behind this as well, as well as Mrs. Picard. We were not excited about having anyone return to any building, even though we had done a study internal, a North Andover study of the safety of our buildings. We, the teachers' union, you know, requested, asked, if you will, I hope that we're okay, that our buildings be reviewed and inspected by an outside company. So even the professional development that was done by teachers was remote until that study returned to show that the schools were safe to return to. That information, I think, came in, Dr. Mealy helped me here, I think on Thursday of last week. Friday was a no-PD day because of the long weekend. Monday was a no-PD day because of the holiday. We wanted teachers to get that information. They were remote yesterday as well. And their first day in our buildings was today. I can honestly say, this weighs, every decision that we're making weighs very heavily on me as a, not only as a parent, but as a community member. And for me to say to the staff, you need to go into the buildings without knowing that they're safe, was not something I was willing to do. So until we had that and our entry criteria, which we had agreed upon as part of the union negotiations, was that we were not returning to schools in person until we knew that those buildings were safe. And so that, again, that report came out, whatever that was, the 3rd? Yep. And, you know, we met last night for, I don't even know, for four and a half hours to ensure that we can get that returned in as best as possible. So I hope I've answered part of your question. Mrs. Picard, do you have anything to add there?
I sure do. So, I mean, one of the things that we've talked about is that teachers are the best people to prepare students to enter school buildings. And there's no time before we start interacting with students on the 16th to have prepared them and to build those relationships for them to be ready to move into the school buildings. So, you know, there wasn't time during the professional development. We kept... We kept those teachers with a tremendous amount of learning, and I think last week, Ms. Marks shared with us the PD schedule. So there wasn't an opportunity for the teachers to prepare the students prior to when the students begin on September 16th.
Ms. Picard, can I have a follow-up question to Dr. Gilligan or Dr. Millie, please?
Of course.
Dr. Gilligan, to the best of your knowledge, how many other school districts across the state were, I wouldn't say mandated, but forced by their teacher union to have such a study done? I know you talked to a lot of your colleagues across the state.
I know the firm we used was locally, I believe, in Methuen, and after they did North Andover, they were going to Lawrence. I believe they also did Drakeett. So it's, they were very much around the Merrimack Valley, I know that. Dr. Millie's?
Yeah, I don't know the member. I can tell you, though, being on the listserv with business managers and assistant superintendents for finance and operations, most of those on the listserv were dealing with the same request.
And just a last follow-up on this topic. Do we know how many of our own teachers were in the buildings over the summer with some of the programs we ran anyways? We ran a lot of kid programs, I know my kids were in the schools.
We have the executive director, Marcy, do you want to talk a little bit about the special education extended school year?
I was referring to the community programs.
Oh, community programs were a wreck of a lot. Yeah, there were some, there was some programming with the community programs as well as the extended.
But there were, there were teachers in the buildings through the summer?
Community programs mostly hires teaching assistants, but there were some programs going on that included teachers as well.
The teaching assistants are represented by the same teaching union?
Overall, MTA, yes.
Thank you.
What did Marcy say?
All the programs that are listed, you have the list if one people go in. So the A B E C C intensive preschool program had teachers, and the elementary Franklin Rise 1 and Rise 2 program, Sergeant School, the Multiple Supports Program, NAMs, the Rise Multiple Supports Program and Life Skills, and at North Andover High School, the Rise Pre-Vocational and the Rise Vocational all had students and teachers in the buildings during the summer program, which I think started September, excuse me, July 20th, is that right, Ms. Picusy?
Some started the 20th, some started the 27th.
Anything further, Mr. Teresi, at this time?
Are we going to get to comments and votes, or?
I think we should go with questions first.
Yeah, that's fine. I'm done with questions for now.
Okay, thank you.
Andrew, thank you for the presentation.
Ms. Maybley, do you have further questions? Ms. Maybley, further questions?
No, so my key one was, I just want to make sure it was clear how the online academy was changing, and so you addressed that, thank you. Anything else, I'm following here.
Okay, and Ms. Lynch, do you have questions?
I just want to have you guys explain to the public why the ninth graders are not going back the 21st and 22nd, so that the 10th graders can start on the 24th with the rest of the grades.
So, are you going to take that, Andrew? So again, I would say that it's, as we've said, to have those back-to-back learning days where the students can have curriculum pieces and build a relationship with their teachers. The PD this summer, for these last couple of weeks with teachers, have included a great deal of SEL work and establishing relationships with students in the online setting. So those students having six full days of curriculum and relationship building, as well as their opportunities to learn about how it is going to be safe to enter, remember, they're going to go into five different classrooms over the course of the day. So they'll be able to learn little bits of that at a time. Like, we need multiple exposures and opportunities to ask questions, because it's going to be a little bit different in every classroom, where you're going to put your coat, or where you're going to put your backpack, is going to be a little bit different in every, in every classroom. So those six days back-to-back allow teachers to focus on curriculum, as well as social emotional support and physical safety in entering the building.
Yeah, I'll also add something else. I mean, I think having the ability for those first three days, which would be all remote days, gives a really good opportunity and a really good foundation for all of our students, right? And how do you enter the building? How do you, you know, that you have to wash your hands for 20 seconds. If you're feeling ill, don't come to school. This is, you know, where you're going to go from a nursing perspective in order to do some of those things. It also gives, on that, whatever it is, 21st, 22nd, 23rd, the ability for the teachers to start to teach, right? I mean, like, I don't mean that casually, right? And I don't mean that in a condescending way. There's going to be a lot of social and emotional pieces that need to come together. There's a lot of protocol things that need to come together. And then they need to start to put the foundation in for what's going to happen from an educational perspective. And I don't think you flip the switch to that, you know, after three days to then kind of have sophomores, juniors, and seniors on that 21st, just, okay, great, now you're remote. You're, you know, you're going to be remote, you know, for these days. So it gives everybody the opportunity, because some of the freshmen will have classes with upperclassmen, and they, you know, will have an educational foundation before they start to kind of make that move for some of the older students on that 24th and the 25th to be doing some independent work on those two days.
So that was my next question. So on the 24th and 25th, they're not getting live synchronous learning?
I think that some of that is being designed with the high school schedule and the coverage for some of those classes, while some of the freshmen are actually in there. So some of those students will be there, and in classes where there are, and correct me if I'm saying any of this incorrect, Dr. Gilligan, so for some of those where there are no freshmen in there, there will be, you know, there will be all systems go, right? I mean, like, they're continuing on. I think when there are classes where there are some freshmen that are there, there will be, you know, still some learning that's going on, but some of those freshmen, you know, will have some things that they're doing in person, whereas some of the older students might have the opportunity to do some of those, kind of starting off alone. Anything you want to add to that, Dr. Gilligan?
No, exactly right. So there's a little bit of overlap sometimes with the ninth grader taking a class with the others, so 10 through 12 will have some remote, and there may be some condensing or, you know, some shifting, but for the most part, the freshman will be, have that in-person day, while the others participate remotely.
Yep. I think, Mrs. Picard, there's one other thing that we need to talk a little bit about in terms of the high school.
Exactly. Yep, go ahead.
And specifically about the high school. When we talk about student safety, you can hide that for a second, I want to actually explain it. When we talk about student safety, I mean, it's not something that I think we're, again, casual about. I will say, I am the one who made the recommendation or the movement to move the high school to a full day. When we were in negotiations and we were talking about what that was and how that looked, that change meant lunch was happening in the high school. What we didn't necessarily hear at that time, which we learned a little bit later, is the impact of that decision. To be clear, none of us kind of knew that at the time. What that means is, if you think of the high school cafeteria and the spacing that needs to occur for students while they are eating without masks on, the cafeteria can't contain the students, right? It can't, it can't physically hold them. So what does that mean from a student perspective? That means those students were eating lunch in their classrooms. So they were going to four different classes, going in, sitting down at a desk, and eating lunch where four other students had sat for the day, which is different from the elementary. And the middle school students, they are eating at their own desk, if you will, right? So there's a placemat that's out, there's, you know, something that's there that's kind of, you know, a food surface, if you will. These students were going in and they were, they were going to be sitting down again at that desk where other students were. So they'd finish that, they'd go to their last class, and then they'd leave and they'd go home for the day. That bothered me, that bothered the teachers who were there as well. And so the change in the recommendation that we kind of agreed on is a little bit of a flip-flop. So the high school, Jim, you can, Dr. Millie, I'm sorry, you can scroll up if you want, we are switching how lunch happens at the high school. So there are four academic periods, or there were four academic periods, lunch and then a fifth. We are now doing five academic classes, and then lunch is to go. So it is grab and go. So if you need a lunch, if you are free, reduced, you need to buy, you're going to kind of be at the high school a little bit longer because you are going to play a sport or something like that, you have the opportunity to get your lunch there, but you are not now having to eat in the building. And if you can go home from a ride or a transportation perspective, great, fantastic. So the high school day actually gets shortened, and dismissal will be at 1:25, which now means, again, that that lunch period, that lunchtime is no longer in the building.
And just to clarify, there is no change to the number of academic minutes that the students will have. They will still have five 50-minute periods during the academic day and in-person days.
Yes, that's correct.
So for those students who choose to bring a lunch, who do play sports, can they eat it in the parking lot, or where would they be eating their lunch?
I think we'll, I'll let Dr. Gilligan talk a little bit about that. I don't, I don't know if we're going to have some spaces for them, but I think part of the goal was that they're not eating in a classroom on a desk at that point. I think one of the other things, and I think Dr. Millie has it presented here as well, is there is a scheduled snack time that's kind of in there, which sounds a little silly, because I think, I think of, you know, elementary students and, you know, the middle with kind of snacks. But I think we all know, if you've got a high schooler, right, you know, they don't make it through the middle of the morning without, you know, a granola bar, a piece of fruit, you know, something that they're going to have to kind of keep, keep them going throughout the day. And so we wanted to make sure that they had an opportunity to do that, to do that safely, that may be part of the end of a class, as they're kind of getting ready to go on to their next class. We also know some students who have some medical needs where they need to have something to eat, they can't go for that duration of time. So we wanted to make sure that we were sensitive to their needs as well. But number one, I think the safety of our students.
Yes, so there is a structure, there will be a snack break after, you know, period three, and that is correct, so that students will have that, and it's just swapping out the last period for lunch.
What about, my question was the designated area for students who do play sports and can't go home in between?
So the answer really to that is that the building leadership teams are operationalizing all of the aspects of the day, and so that will be one of the aspects of the day that they'll operationalize. That will be one of the things that's communicated during those six remote days that we'll have to start the year.
Great, thank you.
Since there will be no one coming in after whatever space we have them use, it'll be easier to just clean and disinfect after they've left.
I just want to add one thing, what's really important, at least, it's really important to all of us, and I know it's, Jim could talk about it, but even when we're on remote days, we will provide food services to students. And Erica, this spring, I mean, I think at one point we were picking up almost like 7,000 meals a week.
A week, yeah.
Yeah, and delivery as well. So if kids are, you know, in a hybrid on an asynchronous day, we'll deliver to the house, or they'll take it to home the day before, we'll work that out. I'm confident we can do so.
Thank you, that's important, too. Okay, so are we through with the questions and ready for comments? And is there anybody who has a burning desire to be first to make comments? Hearing none?
I think I've spoken enough, so I might yield.
All right, so we'll go, we'll go in our regular order, and I'll start with Mr. Teresi.
By my calculation, we've had one, two, three, four, five, six, seven school committees in the last eight weeks. I think there's a lot of people who've been watching these, and I think they probably understand how this is going and how it's going to go, and how people feel about it. I don't think there's any surprises that are forthcoming. I think I definitely, I need to say my piece here, but let me preface that again by just really saying how much I respect and admire Andrew and Helen for the work that they've done over the last, you know, several weeks, the hours that they put in. People got to remember, this is a volunteer job for all of us, basically, and the sacrifices that you've made for your families and yourselves over the summer, I can't thank you enough. It's no secret that we're going to disagree at the end of the night, but you have my, my complete respect for what you guys have done over the last several weeks. So I want to say that to start with.
Thank you.
So, I think regardless of how this comes out, I'm going to be accused of being anti-teacher, but I do want to say first as a parent that really lucky to have some of the teachers we have in this district. My experience, really, really only four teachers, quite frankly, that I've had experience with at the Kittredge. You know, Beth Farr, Katie Barnett, Gail Callaway, and Angela Saterio, fabulous people. Great teachers, my kids are blessed to have them, so very thankful for that. That's as a parent. As a school committee member, I've worked with the teachers' union, it'll be, it'll be six years next week that I've been on the school committee. And there's been so many times that I've stood with them, you know, I think, you know, I know Andrew recalls this, but in the first few months, and I'm sorry, I don't want this written down, I'm kind of winging it, you know, we had a big battle, and I went to bat for one of our teachers against the wishes of the school committee and, and the administration at the time. So I don't think I've ever backed down from supporting something that I thought was right. As recently as, you know, this past year, I know this, this body knows that I went to bat for the springtime coaches on their stipends. And just globally, I think this board, you know, I was chair last year, we got the largest budget increase in probably 10, 12 years. So I feel like I have, you know, the record to say that I'm not anti-teacher, that I've done, I've done the things that demonstrate that I'm not. But I am going to have some very pointed remarks about what's happened over the last two months, and it really has really upset me and frustrated me, and I'm really disgusted in a lot of ways with it. If I have one regret over this whole process was that when the hybrid plan came out, you know, we kind of accepted it, and I wanted more, more in-person learning. I know this body knows it, and everyone who's watching knows that I want more in-person learning, fought for that. But we did, I felt that compromised right off the bat, and if there's one regret in this whole thing, I wish, wish we hadn't, we hadn't have done that. I felt, Greg, you laid out a great process, you engaged teachers, parents, students back in June and July, you guys came up with a plan, and basically adopted that. There were a few tweaks to it, but it was still the two days of in-person, three days remote. So I felt we did those things, and I felt there was teacher buy-in. And we had our meeting on, on Ju, July 30th, when you presented it. Something changed that week, and I think this part of the public knows what changed that week. The MTA came in hard across the state, and they made demands of DESI and the state, and they, you know, in my opinion, that funneled down to the locals. Now, I do think highly of Ryan and Lisa, the two, the two union presidents, I've worked with them over the last couple of years, and I do think highly of them. I don't think this was in their control, what happened across the state, because this is happening everywhere. We all know that. People are going back later, they're starting remotely, and it's because the MTA and the AFT are pushing this, this issue. I asked those questions about the safety plans earlier, because that was, that was part of the strategy that the MT had. The MTA had this strategy of drag things out, just keep on, you know, pushing it out, don't agree to anything, and eventually they're going to have to push back the start dates. You know, it was like the old, the old North Carolina teams, Dean Smith, the four-corner offense, they just pass the ball around and they run out the clock. And that's what's happened here. They ran out the clock on this negotiation, and again, I know the pressure and everything that you outlined a few minutes ago, Andrew, I agree with it from that perspective, but not from the perspective of where we started over the last few months. We could have got all this stuff done if they negotiated in good faith with us. And again, I don't want to disparage our two union presidents, because I do think they were getting orders from other folks not to agree to this stuff, but, you know, other, other districts are, I don't want to say that they're folding, I mean... I don't want to say that they're folding. I mean, what happened in Andover, I think, is interesting, and how that plays out remains to be seen. But, you know, obviously, the state relations, Labor Relations Board felt that their action, the Andover Union, was not legal. And maybe that had some incentive for them to come to this agreement. I don't know. But I just want to personally, you know, apologize to the parents that have had to struggle with making plans for their kids to go back. A lot of working parents that are trying to balance everything. It's, it's been quite a few months, so I don't think I need to get into all that. But I do feel for all of you having to change your plans again at this late date. So I am, as you can guess, I am going to vote no today on this. But I do think Andrew and Helen, you did the best you could under circumstances. Things were out of your control, and I think in some ways were out of our own locals' control. So if any of the people who are upset about not having enough in-person learning, please don't take it out on these two. I think they, we owe them a huge debt of gratitude. So thank you, and I think that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Teresi. Mr. McDevitt, I'm going to skip you for the time being, and I'm going to move on to Ms. Mabley.
Sure.
So I get to follow Mr. Trissey?
She always calls me first. I didn't ask her to go first.
It's just the order which we're sitting. You know, it's because where I can see you in the line, you're there. Plus, you always had to go last last year because you were, you were the chair. So you, you went last. So now it's, you know, the last shall be first. It's all good. But yep, that puts you next, Ms. Mabley.
Okay, so a couple of things, just factual things first, not, but, you know, specifics, and then I can get to some thoughts. I know, for one, that this high school change for the lunch at the end, I had a few people say to me that they were excited until we did that because they were worried about the lunch. And so I know some people are going to be very, very happy. I had one friend say, my kid's not going to eat till they get home, so they're going to sit there during that fourth period or whatever that window because they're not going to eat at school. So that's taken care of, and I think we've kind of been able to, we're able to get both things done, get the five classes at 50 minutes and still get food worked out. So I appreciate that. I appreciate all the thoughtfulness of, of what this plan represents. And, you know, as I voted earlier, I'm in favor of getting kids into school, and I think that you've managed to get that to happen on a timeline that I can, I can stomach and that I also think has really our kids' best interests at heart. I think, I particularly love the kindergarten thing because they're in, they're half-classes or whatever, the A and B cohorts, but you split them even further to get them in. That sounds beautiful to me in terms of making the best out of what we're dealing with. Kids coming into school, maybe they didn't even get to go to preschool all this last spring, and so now you're getting them in in little groups, I'm guessing of like five. I thought that was really thoughtful, and I appreciate that. I'm sure from the teacher perspective, that they must be, or would be happy with that as well. And I know Ms. Lynch and I helped out at lunch when the ADECC opened the first couple of days. And so we saw firsthand the excitement of new little kids. And so this really takes care of that nicely. And I just appreciate, appreciate all of it that that's been thought through here. I'm happy to hear that most of the kids are getting back into the building after a couple of days, and so I appreciate that. And then just a comment on what Mr. Trissey says. I don't disagree that it's been hard that it's taken up until the 9th of September to get to this point. But I know that, that there's so much to consider, and that there have been, you know, people have been afraid. Parents have been afraid, teachers have been afraid, and there's too much unknown. And so I think that that report that came out helped. And the negotiating team has been, I learned this in work years ago, a colleague and I had to start a whole new division, but we had no authority over anybody, but we had all the responsibility to get it started. And that's kind of how you guys have been operating. You've been operating with all the responsibility but no authority until we all vote. So the way you get that done is through using your influence and using your strong relationships. And so I can only imagine how many discussions you all had to get to this point, and I appreciate it. So I, I'm happy to see this, and I'm certainly happy to see that we'll be in school before October.
Thank you, Ms. Mabley. Ms. Lynch?
Yep. So I, I agree with both of my colleagues. I am disappointed that we're still delaying after being out of school for six months. I, too, would like to see more in-person learning. I think it's so important for the kids. They just need it. But I also agree that we need a resolution and we need a finality to this. We need to give parents a chance to plan and know for sure when school is starting. I like that the first six days are going to be all live synchronous learning. I think that, that puts a lot of parents at ease, wondering what their kids were going to do for those days. So I really love that aspect of it. And I'm just glad that we are finally moving forward.
Thank you, Ms. Lynch. Mr. McDevitt, do you have anything to add?
I'll just add a couple of quick comments. I've probably spoken enough tonight. Usually I do, though. You know, I, I think it's important to recognize, you know, not just for students, but for faculty and staff. They have not been in the building since I think it was March 13th, right? That Friday was the 13th, ominous Friday the 13th. So I think what we're talking about is our return to school in person. We're really delaying by six days. I understand that that's difficult for parents. I understand that that's a challenge. I understand that the timeline of that is tight. But I think that there's something that's more important, and that's getting it right. And if we have the opportunity to pause and make sure that we return safe, our faculty return safe, then, then that's the number one goal that I think we should have as a community. I said a couple of weeks ago, I think we need to be mindful of the messages that, that we share, right? People are watching what we do, what we say. Most importantly, I think our children are watching. And if we are negative about the teachers kind of going back and what that looks like, I think the kids are going to pick up on that. I think we need to remember that we are all in this together, and our support of, of each other, because I think as a community, we're going to rely on each other, whether it is to help pick up kids from school or drive them, because we've got work schedules and things of that nature. To the teachers as well, I think, you know, a lot of them are, you know, they're parents themselves. Some of them are in our district, but, you know, they're coming from very many districts. And I think, I think they shared, it was like 81, 82 districts, over 80 districts where they're traveling into North Andover in order to be here. And, you know, that's, that's a big consideration as well with where they are from their own, I don't want to say case rate, but, you know, what's happening in those towns, in those communities. We need to be sure we have this right and that, you know, our students are supported, our staff are supported, you know, for things like mask-wearing, protocols, all of that. I support the hybrid. I wish it were more time. I wish it were five days a week, but it's not. This, this is not the new normal, but this is the way we are today. And this, I think, is our best opportunity, given the information we have today, to move forward. So that's where I stand.
Thank you, Mr. McDevitt. North Andover Camp, just so you know, I'm getting repeat back at myself. I think I'm hearing myself from there as well as from here. And it seems to have diminished, but that's just a technical thing that I'd let you know. I don't have anything really to add at this point. I really appreciate all the thoughtfulness of our, of all my colleagues on this committee. They've helped a great deal as we've figured out how to move forward at this time. So I think that it's right now for us to vote publicly. And so I will, unless somebody has something else? Nope. So I'll go down the line.
Ms. Picard, I think we should note that we have already voted for this in executive session, and we are now choosing to publicly vote as well.
That is correct. Yes, thank you, Mr. McDevitt. We did have public, excuse me, executive session prior to this to discuss our negotiations, including this MOU. And we did vote in executive session. But it's really important that the public know the thought processes and where we stand. I think, you know, we're not going to be a 5-0 vote, which we often are. And I think that it helps the public to recognize themselves being represented here. There's nothing probably that we're going to do this year that, that's 100% that we're all thinking is the, the best option. What we're looking for, it feels to me, is the least imperfect solution. So for me now, this is the least imperfect solution to the start of school and the one that's going to give us the greatest opportunity for success and continued success through the year. So, so starting with Mr. Teresi, your vote, please.
Are we motioning?
I thought, didn't we already did?
Okay, sorry.
We did. We did motion, second, and discuss. So we're at vote.
I still vote no.
Thank you. Mr. McDevitt?
I still vote yes.
Ms. Mabley?
Yes.
Ms. Lynch?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. So that is 4-1. The motion carries. And I thank you all for your thoughtful approach to this. So the only other thing on our agenda is to adjourn, but we usually do have an opportunity for members and administrators, if they want, to have one last opportunity to speak into the meeting.
No, no, thank you, Helen.
Thank you, David. Mr. McDevitt?
Not tonight.
Okay. Ms. Mabley?
Just one small thing I wanted to, my daughter is now going to be an eighth grader, but she had one of her seventh grade teachers reach out to her over the summer, and I'm guessing that this teacher probably did that to a lot of the students or all the students, by an email just to say, hey, thinking of you, hope your summer's going well. And I thought that was wonderful. I don't want to say thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. And Ms. Lynch?
I don't have a comment. I actually have one question that I forgot to ask earlier. Dr. Gilligan, do you know if the SATs are still happening?
That I will have to check.
Yeah, I think the date for that was September 23rd. Is that right?
Yep.
And they were going to post them in the high school, right?
We will check in the first thing in the morning. They will be sending, principals will be sending out schedules or assignments, more information tomorrow afternoon, along with other information about reopening, so.
And when will, I'm sorry, another question. When will the elementary schools get their class assignments? Is that this week?
Tomorrow afternoon.
Tomorrow afternoon also.
Is the, is the goal, so.
Okay. Dr. Gilligan, do you have anything you want to add at this time?
I just want to say thank you for everyone's patience. I think that this has been a long process, and I think we have not been in school since the night before Mr. North Andover. We sat here March 12th, and we talked about canceling school, and I think people thought it might be for a day or two. And then it turned into a couple of weeks, and now here we are, six months later. I think that there is no perfect answer. This is a challenge everywhere in the Commonwealth and the country. And I just know that North Andover is a special place where people go the extra mile for our kids. And I know that people have put a lot of thought into getting this right and returning our kids safely. And I look forward to getting them back and keeping them here and safe and well. And I just appreciate my team, I appreciate the teachers, and I appreciate the support of the school committee and the public and their patience. And really thank you for a lot of really kind notes over the last few weeks. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gilligan. Dr. Millie, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Thank you for asking, but no, I'm all set.
Okay. Ms. Picusi?
No, thank you, Helen.
Okay, great. So I would, I would just say two things. One, I really, again, appreciate that we, I'm wearing, you can't probably see it, but I'm wearing my Raze t-shirt. And I'm so proud of the way that we work together in North Andover, and even when we disagree, that we still display our Raze values. And I think that's really important. And then I'd also like to thank, I got a, I got a picture the other day from our school student rep, Eamon O'Carroll, sent me a picture of the student council put up a cup sign on the fencing that says, "Welcome back." And I'm sure that everyone who arrives at the high school will feel tremendous about being welcomed back to North Andover High School. And I won't be surprised to hear that there are others who might put, you know, whatever chalk encouragement on sidewalks in front of elementary schools or any number of things that I'm sure are being thought about and acted on and considered. So I'm appreciative of all those efforts that folks are doing to make sure that we have a terrific start to the school year. So I would now entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Second.
Moved by Ms. Lynch and seconded by Mr. McDevitt. Is there any discussion?
One, one point of discussion, could you officially state that there will be no meeting tomorrow?
There will be no meeting tomorrow.
Thank you.
I do not believe, thank you for, for mentioning that. I do not believe that we need to have a meeting next week. We took care of all our policy work over the last few weeks. So I think we may get a week off. But that may not be true because we, this was a, a small MOU for the calendar piece, and we will have a larger MOU that we will reach agreement on. Mr. McDevitt and I will be meeting tomorrow night in negotiations with the North Andover Teachers Association, along with Dr. Gilligan and his team. So we are still working towards finalizing that agreement. But I think it's important that, that the community know that by finalizing this calendar piece, that is no longer in negotiations. There are other aspects that we are coming to agreement on. And I think we're all hopeful that it will go smoothly and we'll continue our productive meetings. But school committee will not have an executive session or an open session tomorrow night.
Thank you.
You bet. So we had moved and seconded and discussion, and I think we're ready for a vote. And so I will start with Mr. Teresi, who said aye. Mr. McDevitt?
Aye.
Ms. Mabley?
Aye.
Ms. Lynch?
Yes.
And the chair votes in favor, so we are adjourned on 9/9/2020 at 8:08 PM. Thank you.